Good evening, welcome to the Lake Mills City Council. It sounds like my microphone's working. City Council meeting for August 2nd, 2022. Can we please have roll call?
Mr. Fields?
He was on earlier, but he might be having some connection issues. So we'll keep an eye on it and see if he comes back.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
All right, thank you. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Correction and/or approval of the City Council minutes of July 19, 2022. That was in the packet, and I got word that it was updated with some revisions. Did you have comment on that, Lisa?
Oh, yes, when I was reading through them just about an hour ago, it looked like we had missed. It omitted the approval for the Sidewalk Cafe license for Daydream believers. So it looks like Misty posted an updated version that does have that on the record. So Misty, was there any other changes?
I found an extra period that I removed in a different paragraph.
Okay.
That was it, though.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council minutes of July 19, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It's four, and there's no Steve yet, so we'll say 4-0 on that. It passes. Correspondence from the community?
I had some correspondence regarding the role of the Public Works Board with respect to the strategic plan, and I think probably a number of us received regarding the financial guarantee for Topol Service Center, which is on the agenda tonight.
All right. Ms. Quidnow?
I didn't have as much. I had a correspondence with regard to the city manager hire, but that was pretty much it.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I also had a correspondence regarding our decision tonight for the city manager.
All right, and I didn't have anything additional, so we're good. And Mr. Fields is back online. Welcome, Mr. Fields. Did you get any correspondence? I'll keep moving. He might be having some difficulties connecting yet. All right. So we'll move on to questions and public comment. "The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open law, meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided." So the microphone is available and open. Any comment tonight? Is there anybody online that would like to make a comment? Going once? Going twice? Public comment is closed. Thank you. City manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkie tonight? All right. This is going quick. "Councilmember's board report, councilmember board reports and acceptance of minutes from Planning Commission of January 28, 2022." Any comment on that? I did notice that it said there was a 7-0 vote on the acceptance of their previous minutes, but two people abstained, so I imagine that was a 5-0 with two abstentions.
It's been 5-0. I can't remember if we corrected that in our last meeting or not. It sounds like we didn't, so that would be correct.
But other than that, everything good? All right, we'll accept that into our record and move forward. Council business. We're looking at Resolution 22-40. Let me pull that up here. Thank you for bearing with me here.
Hello, Mr. Waters, can you hear me?
Yes. How you doing, Mr. Fields?
I think I got it figured out. I'm online. Sorry about the delay.
Oh, we're good. Thank you. All right, so Resolution 22-40 is recognition of city service for Elizabeth Milbroth. Can I get a motion on this?
I move to adopt Resolution 22-40 in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills for Elizabeth Milbroth.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion from Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Let me go ahead and read the resolution real quick. "Resolution 22-40 in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Elizabeth Milbroth. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Elizabeth Milbroth for her loyal 25 years of service to the city of Lake Mills. And whereas Elizabeth spent all her time tirelessly working in the finance and treasurer functions, including accounting, bookkeeping, banking services, cash management, investments, and debt financing. And whereas Elizabeth Milbroth ensured that the integrity of the city's books, budgets, books, and investments were safeguarded. And whereas Elizabeth Milbroth passion created a productive, cohesive, and loyal team that under her leadership worked independently to solve problems and expressed their views directly and honestly. And whereas Elizabeth Milbroth was provided reliable and trustworthy service that most residents will not recognize, but has contributed to the betterment of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby wish to express their gratitude and acknowledgement on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills to commend Elizabeth Milbroth for her devotion, passion, and public service given to the city of Lake Mills. Resolved the second day of August, 2022." City staff, some comment here?
Well, I probably worked with Betsy. Well, no, Duane probably has worked with Betsy the longest, but I'm probably the second longest of those around here. So I've known her a long time. She has always been there. She's worked hard. She's put in a lot of time. She made sure that she provided highly ethical and a lot of integrity in her work. And we really appreciated the fact that she kind of kept on us and kept us in the right direction. And you'll note that the city always improved in the financial condition in the 22 years that I've been here, so she was a significant part of that. So I appreciate everything she's done.
Great. Any other comment from city staff? That was a great endorsement, but...
I just want to say that Betsy is absolutely delightful. What a lady. So I appreciate working with you very much. Thank you.
Duane? Since Steve called you out, I thought that maybe it'd be appropriate.
Come up to the mic.
I only called him up because he's been around so long.
Thanks. Betsy, a number of years, obviously. All those audits, all of those review of projects. It was a joy working with you over all of those years, probably as early as all of those 25 years. Was great working with you. You're always respectful and willing to work through issues, and we always seem to get to the end of those audits. And I thank you because those were some long hours at times. Thanks again, and enjoy your time.
So, Betsy, I only was around for one budget process, but it was delightful working with you on that. And whenever I had questions on anything financial, you were very quick to respond. And if you didn't have the answer, you were quick to look up those answers and get back. So from my viewpoint, thank you for the work that you've done. And I'm sure that you did that for the full 25 years that you were here. So thanks.
Betsy, I'd like to just add my best wishes. I've really appreciated working with you, especially the last year and a half. And I think one of the things that this resolution points out is that most residents wouldn't recognize the work that's done in the treasurer's office. But if it's not done well or not done properly, then it does come to people's attention. So I think, I just thank you for so many years of service and your dedication and your integrity and your work. Thank you, and all the best in your retirement. Thank you, Betsy, again, for your work. I've also enjoyed getting to know you for the time that I've been here, and it has been a delay, as everybody else has said. So appreciate your time, and I hope that you enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
And last but not least, I just adore you, and I think that you are a very wonderful person. I really like your professionalism and always that you have a smile on your face and you're willing to laugh. I think that that is probably one of the most important pieces of working in government is being able to laugh at some things. So I appreciate that sense of humor. Thank you.
Mr. Fields, did you have a comment? I didn't want to cut you off here.
No, that's fine. Thank you. No, Betsy, it's been great working with you. You're a rock star, so enjoy retirement. It is well deserved.
All right. I think it's time to vote. Roll call?
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just come out and shake your hand real quick, and thank you. It's open to you if you want to. Okay, thank you.
Do we need to suspend the rules since she's no longer staff?
Okay. Well, thank you for all the kind things you've said. I really appreciate that. The resolution is wonderful, and it'll be a memory. I had a great career here with the city. I really appreciate all the opportunities that were presented to me to start as a deputy clerk treasurer, and then as a clerk, and then as the treasurer finance director. It has been wonderful working here and all of the professional and dedicated people as the city staff, the elected officials that I've worked with so many through the years, and even volunteers that come and put in their dedicated time and wonderful work that they do. So it has been a wonderful time working for the city, and I will remember so many of you in the years to come. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a discussion decision on liquor license agent change for IYS Ventures LLC, DBA, iMart Stores, 206 West Madison Street, Cheryl Stillbell. Misty, do you have some background on this?
License was just issued at the last council meeting, and then they had a manager change right away, so they put in their application. They've done everything. The background check came back completely fine, so it's simply just an agent change that requires the council to approve.
All right, so we can just do a quick vote on this, then? Any other questions or comments? All right. I guess we do need a motion to make the agent change.
So I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license agent change for IYS Ventures LLC doing business as iMart Stores. For Agent Cheryl Stoll.
Go. Sorry. Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any additional comment or questions? CNN, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a discussion decision on request for proposal of staffing study. This is Motion 22-8-1-1, authorizing the city manager to advertise a request for proposal for staffing study. Can we get a motion?
I move to approve Motion 22-8-1-1, authorizing the city manager to advertise a request for proposals for staffing study.
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. City staff comment?
It was budgeted back in last November. We've been holding off on it to see how things go in relationship to the end of the year. We brought it up again as part of the emergency services information that we've been discussing. And so there were some modifications done to the original RFP. I followed Ms. Bishop's recommendation and put in an early timeline for the emergency services and then a timeline for the rest of the study to be completed. So that went right along with the discussion we had, and it gets it completed in a relatively short period of time and gives you enough time to follow up on the letter that you received that Lake Mills EMS would continue until the middle of next year, '23. So I think this gives you a good opportunity to review all the staff, but particularly early information on the emergency services staff so that you can make the best decision possible. And I should have it out Thursday, and we should be able to have the information back by the first meeting in September.
All right. Any questions? Or comments? Yes?
I've got a comment and maybe a minor suggestion. Thank you for attaching the memo from last year because I think that just reminded us all of the context. And I think I recalled that we had approved it in the budget, but the background is always good for people to be reminded of. I was wondering, under the scope of services, there's a reference in the intro paragraph there about, you know, operational efficiencies and process improvements. And I wondered if maybe adding an item 12, asking the consultant to identify any others of those? So something along the lines of identify any other recommendations for operational efficiencies and process improvements? Maybe adding an item 12 there because that could, it could be something outside of, you know, changing what jobs people have. It might be some purchase of technology or, you know, some other process improvement that's not just staffing. So I don't know if others would agree with that, but I think I'd like to hear any other ideas they come up with as they're looking at our staffing situation.
Sounds great.
I do have a question with regard to how you had stated that it would be first EMS services or emergency services and then the rest of the staff. But I don't see that spelled out in the new RFP. So I don't know if we wanted to make that more specific that way than whomever it is that is coming to propose their consultant business. They understand that this is the highest need at this point.
Let me, under project description, the final paragraph says a consultant will complete the staffing model analysis for the emergency services departments by November 24.
Okay, I see that. Just wondering if that would be something maybe we should put a little bit sooner? Because I think if it's in there more in the beginning of the RFP, I feel like it would be important that they would be able to see that. Right there, it looks kind of like it's like an afterthought.
Well, I did mention again in the project timeline, and I'm pretty sure I had it in there at least three times that the most important part of it was the EMS service or the emergency services, which includes police, fire, and EMS.
Okay.
But I'll, you know, if you want, I can put it in. But generally, the purpose of the study, which is where the first, well, is very general. And then the project description, which is where it talks about the emergency services, probably the most critical part. I don't want to get too carried away because they're going to come in, they're going to do their research and start from that standpoint. So as long as they know what product they have to deliver first, they'll be on that.
Okay.
Anything else, any other comments? So those suggestions don't impact the motion, really? Because that's part of the work?
Yeah, I can just say that.
Okay. So let's move forward. Any, if there's no other comments, let's move forward with a roll call? All right, please roll call.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the discussion decision on acceptance, on accepting the Lake Mills Strategic Planning Report. Currently tabled, so we'll have to pull that off of its tabled state and reactivate it, and then we can get into discussion. If we're good with pulling it off the table.
How do we word that if we're pulling it off the table? Is it like untable this motion? Or how would we, what's the proper verbiage?
Motion to bring it off the table.
Thank you. I move to take Motion 22-8-1-2 off of the table for the purposes of discussion with regard to the corrections that were made to the strategic plan report.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. All right, so we are in the discussion. Any staff comment?
I don't have any.
Okay. So at the last meeting, it was tabled just to give us more time and get more feedback from the community. I didn't receive any feedback from the community, to be honest. But it did give me more of an opportunity to review it, and...
Mr. Waters, just a point of order. Can we vote on the motion to remove from the table?
Great.
Okay.
Sure we can.
Okay, Mrs. Bishop?
Go ahead.
Aye.
I was just going to summarize that we're voting on a motion to take the Lake Mills Strategic Planning Report off the table and going to discussion, so. Thank you. Request of Mrs. Bishop's vote?
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
So there was a handout that came before the meeting. Did you have some?
No, I believe...
Did you have some comment with that?
That was prepared by Ms. Curler with regard to the Motion 22-8-1-2. I believe she has a prepared amendment.
Yes, I was planning to introduce some amendments to the motion itself, but I know we may want to talk about any possible revisions to the report first. At least that would be my thought.
When I reviewed it under the weaknesses that it listed, public safety, and I wasn't, I didn't feel that that was a fair assessment. Maybe public safety staffing would be a weakness, but I didn't feel that the police department and the fire department was a weakness within the city. I'm not sure if that summarizes other people's thoughts or not.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment of that bullet point. Also, keeping in mind that these are general topics that we're supposed to consider moving forward as our main goals and points and considerations. But I would be okay with changing that, and I think that's appropriate. I'm trying to recall our conversations during our strategic planning meetings, and I think it kind of reflected the challenges that we're facing with emergency services. But I think, you know, the way it's worded as a threat doesn't, certainly, I would agree that that doesn't seem the appropriate phrasing. Mr. Waters, what page was that on? Do you recall?
I am pulling it up right now.
I think that's on page seven.
I think it's the fourth, fifth page, actually.
It's numbered page seven.
There you go, numbered page seven.
Got it, okay, thank you. I just wanted to look at it again.
So it was listed in the green under weaknesses? So it lists public safety, police, and fire department.
Excuse me, it's also listed under threats, and so...
I'm fine with it in the threats area.
Okay. So kind of, again, reflecting that kind of emergency services challenges that we're facing?
Because there, it's talking public safety in general, and that would roll in the EMS concerns that we're currently addressing.
So should we, are people wanting to maybe just remove that bullet point from under weaknesses or to revise it?
I would be good with revising it to public safety staffing.
Yeah, I like that as well. It reflects the, you know, I think there's community concerns about the number of staff. We also have issues with part-time versus full-time versus paid on premise, that kind of thing. So I think that kind of captures that.
Are we good with that consensus there then?
Yes.
Sounds like it. And then on page nine, infrastructure and capital improvements. There's a bullet point, maintain the current level of maintenance and step up a schedule to meet current requirements. And I was wondering if that should be rewarded to maybe something like maintain the current level of maintenance and adjust the schedule to meet immediate needs. Does that better address that area? I can repeat it one more time here. Maintain the current levels, maintain the current level of maintenance and adjust the schedule to meet immediate needs.
What about just meet needs? Because we're not being, immediate needs seems like almost reactionary to like what we need right now versus the planning aspect of it. And we need to be planning as well.
Usually when we're adjusting the schedule, it's because of a, something that just came up and we have to, we have to move quick to address it, but.
I also think that she didn't mean step, but instead meant set. Because otherwise, it, step up a schedule doesn't quite make sense to me. Maintain the current level of maintenance and step, and set up a schedule to meet current requirements. That makes more sense to me than step. Typos happen.
Yeah, I don't remember any discussion about we were wanting to expand the maintenance or, you know, do more streets a year or more water mains a year, anything. I don't think we were talking about that.
Well, we did talk about adjusting the schedule because of grants and moving things around a little bit to, to address that. So, if we, if we get grant money, then we would want to step up and maybe address some areas that, that would allow, allow better services within the city, so.
Could we also take out the second current? And because then it would, we could say, and set up a schedule to meet requirements?
So, read it one more time.
Sure. Maintain the current level of maintenance and set up a schedule to meet requirements.
Well, the end of that is what Mr. Waters had a change to.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm trying to figure out how your two changes would mesh together.
What was yours? What was the end of yours?
I changed it to needs instead of requirements.
Ah, so just to meet needs?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so to set up a schedule to meet needs? Is that what we're, okay. I would also maybe, and the second bullet point would reword it to say, use flexible funding to accommodate and prepare for fluctuations in the schedule as opposed to react.
Well, that's interesting. I was thinking react was, was maybe the right word because sometimes the grant opportunities come up on a, you know, in an unexpected way, so, but I guess to the extent that the utility staff are prepared for that event, you know, that the way you've worded it also makes sense.
I don't know what you guys think.
Could go either way.
Right. I, I think react, considering what we've, what we have previously in this plan where it, as a weakness, it mentions that we are more reactive than we are proactive. So, to me, that feels like a negative connotation word and that's why I was thinking maybe we could change it so that it looks more proactive as opposed to reactive.
Not only looks, but is more proactive.
Yeah. Well, you know.
So, it would be use flexible funding to accommodate and be prepared for fluctuations in the schedule? Is that, is that how you're phrasing it?
I didn't have be prepared for. I just said to accommodate and prepare for fluctuations in the schedule.
I'm okay with that. Steve, can you hear?
Are you good with all those, Steve?
Okay.
Yep, I'm actually, I'm good with the way it is right now or if you want to change it, I'm fine also.
Okay. Any other discussion or thoughts? Yes.
I had an item on the same page under communications that I would like to tweak a little bit, the current language. Let me get my glasses on here. So, second bullet talks about measuring engagement, which I agree that we should do, but I don't think that's the council goal. I think the council goal is to engage, that we want to engage our citizens. So, I'm proposing that it would just be rephrased to say engage citizens in a variety of ways, so that, you know, including public surveys, city council meetings. And then on that third sub-bullet, I would just tweak that to say seeking input from city committees and boards.
Sounds great.
So, for us, it's a goal and then we would expect the city manager and staff to measure, you know, how well are we doing at that goal? And we would measure ourselves.
No, that's good.
You guys good with that revision? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Curler?
The only thing I had under the, on page eight, under the staffing, when we talked about, well, staffing and financial prioritization. So, the first bullet says put strategies in place to address financial challenges. I think that's good. And then it says possible strategies include, and it's got seeking grants, addressing and updating fee schedule. And I had in my notes from our work sessions, seeking new revenue sources. And I just wonder if we would want to add that, just to kind of highlight that, you know, we don't know what they might be or when they might be available. What do you guys think?
It'd be great. Any new revenue would be wonderful.
Could we just pull that into the first bullet point because it would be in the same line as a grant? So, instead of seeking grants for appropriate projects, perhaps it would be seeking, what was the terminology you used? I'm forgetting.
I just said new revenue sources, so.
Or just revenue sources?
Without taxation, right? New revenue without taxation.
Right, not, right, not property tax.
Does it, I mean.
So, how would you phrase it then?
Oh, just saying seeking new revenue sources for appropriate projects. In that way, then, new revenue sources, grants fall under that category? I think, but I might be wrong.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of inclined to keep them separate only because I think our staff already do a really good job of looking for the grants that are, you know, kind of routine and that they know that they're available and they keep their eyes out for them. And this might be something totally out of the box. It might not be a grant and, so to be kind of giving the staff direction to keep their eyes out for something new, I guess, is why I would like to kind of highlight that.
Okay.
But what do other people think? I mean, I'm happy to combine it together too if it, if it reads more clearly.
I'm fine with that.
Is it a separate bullet or?
Yeah.
Okay. Catherine, do you have any thoughts one way or the other?
I'm okay either way.
Okay, those are my thoughts.
Anything else? So, then looking at the motion itself.
Oh, I guess I do have two other things. One is I would recommend that we update the cover page to August 2022.
Okay.
And I don't know how we want to handle the city manager, but I'm thinking Steve's not going to be available to talk about the strategic plan for too much longer, so whether we want to put the new city manager's name in or just have city manager and the phone number, I probably should take Steve Wilkie out of the mix.
Sorry, Steve.
But you were helpful in this process.
You're very helpful in the process, but we don't expect you to be working on these. At least not after September 8th.
Do we make it a September published date and whoever the new city manager is feature that city manager?
Could do that.
Just postpone it for a month as far as the publication date? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Is there a reason that we might need to publish it quicker?
Only to the extent that it gives our current city manager some direction in working on the budget, which you're currently working on. Because that would be the only connection.
I think just having it available right now is enough direction.
Okay, okay. So, change the date to September then, I'm thinking?
Yeah. With the new city manager? Anything else on the report? Okay, so now we're focusing on the motion.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to amend, motion 22-8-1-2. And I've, our, our city attorney has passed out my proposed revisions to the motion and I've sent an email to Steve Fields. Mr. Fields, did you, I don't know if you're getting email, but, so I sent this to you. So, and I guess we'll, based on our discussion, we'll have to change the first item. But so what I'm proposing is in section one, just to add the phrase and revised.
September?
Yeah, or revision date September 2022. So, then that first to the changes that we've just made. And then I'm proposing to insert a new section three that would read that the 2022 Lake Mills Strategic Plan represents the Planning and Goal Setting Report that identifies the city council's strategic goals and priorities. The reason I want to insert that section is that that's the phrasing that's used in our city code under the city council responsibilities. It talks about a planning and goal setting report, so I just want to kind of make that, make that connection. And then current section three would be renumbered as four and I would propose to revise it so that it reads that the city council and city manager will use the 2022 Lake Mills Strategic Plan to guide the organization's decisions, policies, and actions. And then renumbering four as section five and revising the section to read that the city clerk is directed to file a copy of this motion as an official city document, comma, to distribute the 2022 Lake Mills Strategic Plan to all city committees, boards, and commissions and to post the 2022 Lake Mills Strategic Plan on the city's website with other approved city plans.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, a motion to amend by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any further discussion or comment? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call on the amended motion.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, point of order was that we just amended the motion?
You tell me it wasn't a motion to amend or a motion to amend and adopt.
Okay, so now we have to adopt the amended motion to finish this up.
Vote again?
Yes. Okay.
Do we need a motion? Amen?
Yeah.
So, motion to accept the amended motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended motion 22-8-1-2.
I'll second.
Is that correct? Okay.
All right, motion to adopt the amended motion 22-8-1-2. Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion or questions on the question? Seeing none. Let's have a roll call vote on the adopt, the adoption of the amended motion 22-8-1-2. Roll call.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Are we good to go, Mr. Drescher?
Yep.
All right, fantastic. So, we now have a Lake Mills Strategic Planning Report.
So, I'll.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Lot of hard work.
Yeah, so I'll work with Steve to talk to Erin and just get those updates in the document made since she prepared that for us and then we can get it posted.
All right, fantastic. Next is Resolution 22-41, authorizing the appointment of a city manager for the city of Lake Mills and approval of the city manager's employment agreement. Give a motion on Resolution 22-41.
I move to adopt Resolution 22-41. Do you want me to, oh, okay, sorry. I move to adopt Resolution 22-41. I'm sorry, I closed the thing. Just a moment, I'm having a moment here. There. The, authorizing the appointment of a city manager to the city of Lake Mills and approval of the city manager employment agreement. Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment? Mr. Drescher?
I don't think Drake is online, but this is the culmination of the city manager's search and, search and appointment process. We kind of negotiated within the terms that you provided, his employment agreement. He has executed that appointment agreement. It has not been countersigned. I know that he is currently acting in his role as administrator for Nugleris tonight, so I don't believe he's online. Do you, do you have specific questions or is there an update that you specifically want?
I have a comment. I thought that the, the whole process was done very professionally from the, from the executive firm that, that helped us through this process, from staffing help, the actual review process with the candidates. It was very nice to have community involvement in the process and, and great feedback from the community. And I think that we ended up with a strong candidate here with Mr. Drake Daly and looking forward to, to working with him, so. Any other comments?
I would just add to that echo that I thought it was a very good process and I so appreciated the citizens who came to our meet and greet session and all the ideas and questions that they had for our city manager, though the engagement was really wonderful. And I think a lot of our citizens may not know all the different steps that we went through, but there was a lot of material that was available to the city council from reference checks, background checks, what else? Emotional intelligence surveys. There was a considerable amount of information that we had to work with in addition to the input from staff and citizens. So, it was really valuable to have all of that information to help us make a good, what I think is a good decision.
Any other comments or questions? All right. All right, so we're going to move forward with a roll call of Resolution 22-41, which is the appointment of the city manager and his contract for Mr. Drake Daly. I kind of want to flip his name every once in a while, but it's Drake Daly.
Mr. Waters, point of order, I'm just recalling that the employment contract needs to have a date filled in, and is that to be done by us tonight or?
I think there's, we still have to come to terms on that specific issue. There will be conversation up until, he has to give 30 days' notice at New Glarus. I think there's some contemplation of a little bit of time to move, get a little bit settled in, and then start. He's looking at the beginning of September, but I don't have an exact date yet. After tonight, I will be in touch with Mr. Daly and we'll come up with that date.
So can we approve this with a blank date, and then how do we, how do we find out what the, you know, what the actual start date is?
I'll tell you.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's really the best that I have. He has to give 30 days' notice. 30 days from today is the beginning of September. So it's, it's going to be either that first week of September or the second week of September from what it sounds like.
Okay.
He didn't want to give notice before we voted on this?
No, he absolutely did not.
Understood.
He was willing to sign the contract, though. I think that's an act in good faith, certainly.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with a roll call on that Resolution 22-41, the appointment of the city manager.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidal?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. So not to let this slip by, I think we got, Mr. Wilkie has two more meetings, the second meeting in August and then the first meeting in September, right?
That's correct.
So we'll have plenty of time to, to thank you for your service and all that good stuff, but I didn't just want to let this slip by and not mention something, so.
If it goes like Betsy's, you'll be talking to me in March.
March. We'll have a resolution for you in March? Okay. All right, next is Resolution 22-42, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Topol Service Center Redevelopment. Normally, I guess we have Lori read these every once in a while. I've been skipping over that tonight. I guess I'm in a hurry to get this meeting going, but Lori, can you read Resolution 22-42?
Yes, I can. Want me to read the entire thing?
No.
Okay, just the title?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution 22-42, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Topol Service Center Redevelopment.
So that's probably why I don't have you read it, because it's just the same thing that I say before that, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-42, the acceptance of public improvements and reduction of financial guarantee for Topol Service Center Redevelopment.
Second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
They signed a developer's agreement that agreed to build some infrastructure that the city required, and it required a financial guarantee of $55,000. We have inspected their improvements and have signed off on them, so we recommend the city council reduce the financial guarantee as instructed in the code. It does require that they maintain a one-year warranty of 8250. I know that they have requested that that be waived, so that's up to you guys. We present it as required by the code.
Okay. I believe we have some folks here from Topols. Can we suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules to allow the Topols to speak. Second.
Thank you, and good evening. Can I go ahead, Greg?
Yes.
Oh, we need to vote.
All those in favor suspending the rules? Steve, that's aye?
Aye.
All right.
Slight delay.
Tara, you're on the mic. Go ahead.
Great, thank you again. First of all, I wanted to stop just by thanking Steve and Dan and everybody from the city and at the council level for all of their support in making this possible for us. It's been quite a, quite a learning situation for us, but we're glad to finally almost be to the final finish line. So thank you. I just wanted to go over, one of the references that was sent in the package was a letter from Brandon from Strand and Associates, where he does reference the fact that this is a different situation for money and that we are not dedicating this back to the city. This is something that we are owning and maintaining throughout, and he was very clear that it is not a public improvement. Actually, they just wanted to make sure that our work was being done according to what the public was setting forward or what the city guidelines and code. We've done that, fortunately, and they've done a wonderful job. We're very fortunate to have Friedy and Associates working with us, and they do guarantee their work for quite some time. And we know that we have them to be able to stand back on, as well as a local company in Forest Construction that was able to do the work for us. So we are asking that the, that the financial guarantee reduction of $8,250 be removed from the resolution. It looks like it's also mentioned further be resolved, and then it kind of goes on to talk about required public improvements. But then again, this is not a public improvement.
Is there any questions for Mrs. Topol? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any of your folks there? Okay, just want to make sure I didn't cut anybody off. So we're in the question and comment phase. Any questions or comments?
So to Ms. Topol's point and Mr. Herbert's letter, how do we go about fixing this resolution? Do we just remove reference to the acceptance of public improvements?
No, it's an improvement required by the public. So you can't remove that part. You just remove the part that says that you're requiring them to maintain a financial warranty because they have a warranty through their contractor.
Well. Okay, because we would normally have the warranty because it's city land and the city would go back and enforce the warranty in that year if something was going on. So that's why you're saying remove the warranty requirement for this resolution.
Yeah, this is, this is even more unusual. We never accept detention basins unless we build them ourselves. So the vast majority of detention basins in the city are owned by homeowners associations. We still require the financial guarantee and those types of things. In this case, it's one private property owner, and it handles all their facilities, and they have a warranty through their contractor, which is a little bit different than what we normally see through the other types of public contracting. So I don't have any problem. It's such a small detention basin that you would hardly notice it if you weren't paying particular attention. It's not like the one in Brookstone or those types of detention basins. So I'm not overly concerned about it. Friedy's been good to work with, so we, I'm comfortable with that. That's up to the council to determine whether they want to continue to follow the code as it is or to look at this as a special condition, which has already been noted by, you know, under the conditions of that Tara mentioned and Brandon mentioned.
Well, for not enforcing a warranty because it's not a public improvement, that's fine. I'm concerned about the language in the resolution. And at least, I'm trying to read through it here, at least two places, maybe more, it says regarding the acceptance of the required public improvements, saying that we're taking this on as the city. And so does there need to be a fix to that language in this resolution?
Yeah, we're not, it's kind of hard. Let's say, instead of accept, let's say we approve the construction of the improvements as required by the public?
I think I would prefer that.
Yeah, then that would be great. I'm fine with that, because that is really what's going on here. They were required to build that by the city for public improvements to reduce flooding and pollution in the water. So it is an improvement required by us for the public benefit, but it's not actually being given to the city like in a lot of cases.
But so we are, we need to accept that it was constructed according to the city requirements?
I think that we went with approved, that the city approves the requirements as required.
We can say that, but that's not what the resolution currently says. So I would propose at this point tabling this until the next meeting so that these changes can be made throughout. I don't know if Ms. Topol has an issue with that. I don't know that two weeks makes a difference, especially because we're not enforcing a warranty. The one-year period really seems to be moot here. Ms. Topol, would that be okay with you if we tabled this to get those changes made?
I guess the only question I would have is if it would affect us gaining occupancy or not, which should, we're hoping to happen on Thursday.
I'm sorry, getting the what?
We're supposed to be having our final inspection on Thursday, so my question would be is if it would affect occupancy?
No, it wouldn't affect occupancy. We've already approved the construction, so the release of the financial guarantee wouldn't have any impact on that.
Okay, then two weeks is fine.
Okay.
Before we table, can I ask a quick question?
I mean, otherwise we would just limp through making the changes, and I would rather not do that, but that's the only reason I proposed it.
On the right to cure, what would be the steps that we would take if we don't have this type of deposit? What are the steps the city would take to cure this situation?
Well, we would ask Topols to, we would send Topols a notice, and they would work with their contractor to cure. The city would also then have the option of going in and fixing it under a special charge or a special assessment and filing that against them. They would either have to sign off on that or the council would have to approve that, but that's probably the most likely. If there were a one-year warranty period and you held that money, anything over and above it, you would have to figure out how to come up with that money anyways. Anything under it, then you got to go through the full process and figure out what has or hasn't been spent and refund. So there's nothing easy about following up on a project like that, but at least you have the options. And generally, having the cash in hand is the easiest.
Okay. And also, I would like to comment how wonderful your facility looks. It's just, I moved to the south side, so I get to look at it all the time, and it's a pleasure to drive by at this point. And I hope that once you get open, that maybe city council might get an invitation to come by and take a look at it. So.
Absolutely.
It'd be great. All right.
Can I make a further comment about that?
Sure.
Since I grew up in a way here, my grandfather would often go to Topol Station, and the 76 sign was always something that he would comment on, like how iconic it was. So thank you for bringing it back. I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I just wanted to make, sorry, after all this goodwill, I guess I still had a clarifying question. So are we understanding that these are not, I mean, I think there still is confusion in my mind about Brandon's email, where he is saying that they're not public improvements and that the letter of credit could be released. But Steve, you're saying that they still are under the ordinance, they are still considered to be public improvements? Is that right?
Also, under the development agreement, they're required public improvements.
The mic.
In the development agreement, they are required public improvements. I think the line that Brandon is actually drawing is acceptance of those improvements. It's wholly situated on property that they own. There is no public access. We don't have an easement right to that. We're not expected to maintain the stormwater pond. Yeah, I think that's kind of the hybrid situation that Steve is getting at. While they're, they're called for and they benefit the public, they aren't dedicated or accepted by the city. Yeah, so that's why we're kind of waffling on the word of accept and coming up with a better word at the next meeting. If they can wait, I don't have any problem with that. I think that's, you know, we can come up with something that makes it a little bit clearer. No one's ever asked the question before, and we have accepted a lot of these types of, these improvements that we, you know, are hybrids, as Dan has noted. But, you know, we can, we can wordsmith it, make sure that we get it back right.
All right.
So.
Questions or comments?
At this point, I would move to table Resolution 22-42, Acceptance of Public Improvements for Topol Service Center Redevelopment until the next city council meeting, so that the areas that refer to acceptance of the improvements as public improvements can be changed, maybe to reference acknowledge that the requirements have been met or some other such language.
I'll second.
Motion to table by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion?
Is it your intention, Ms. Bishop, that the financial guarantee then would be reduced to zero and there would be no one-year warranty period? Is that what we're seeking in an updated resolution?
That was not part of the motion. I don't know what the appropriate response is for that issue, because Mr. Wilkie did mention other courses of action to take if something happened to this improvement, so I don't know.
As the author of that motion, I believe you can still change it if you'd like. It hasn't been voted upon.
I mean, what's the recommendation from staff on that?
If it were me, and you wanted to reduce that financial guarantee down, you would have them sign something that says they'd waive on a special charge if required.
I don't intend to do that with my motion.
Okay. I just recommend it.
I didn't hear what you said. You don't?
Oh, I was declining to make that recommendation.
Great, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? So the vote is to table Resolution 22-42. Roll call, please.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidal?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 22-43. Lori, can you read that? I stopped short, so you can actually have some glory there.
Resolution 22-43, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Rock Creek Luxury Apartments, Northern Management.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-43, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Reduction of Financial Guarantee for Rock Creek Luxury Apartments, Northern Management.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Curler. Staff comment?
There are just about $2 million worth of public improvements in here, including water main, sanitary sewer, electric, and stormwater. It does have a very similar detention basin, but the main thing is here that the, I would not recommend waiving the financial guarantee in this, in any way, shape, or form. I think that you need that there, and the public improvements have been recommended for approval. They're out about five years. The developer hasn't made any request to change it, so I recommend approving it as is.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with a vote. Roll call, please. What we're voting on is the approval of Resolution 22-43.
Who made that motion?
Mrs. Bishop, who was seconded by Mrs. Curler.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidal?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ordinance 1239. This is a second reading. Lori, can you please read this? Just the header, wait.
Yep.
Just the header for the second reading. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ordinance 1239, amending City of Lake Mills. Ordinance 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 018-0713-1214-002. Owner, Kingbird Real Estate, Second LLC, W7411, County Road V, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
So that was the second reading. We'll have the third reading at our next meeting. Is there any discussion on Ordinance 1239 tonight? Seeing none, let's move forward to the next item, which is Ordinance 1240. Lori, this is the second reading. Can you read that one?
Ordinance 1240, amending city code, Chapter 38, City Council, Section 38-3, Meetings, Rules of Procedure.
All right, so that was the second reading of Ordinance 1240. Third reading will be at our next meeting. Is there any comment or discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, let's move forward with Ordinance 1241. This is the first reading of of this ordinance. So Lori, can you, I guess, read through the whole thing according to current statute?
Ordinance number 1241, an ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 018-0713-1113-039. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, Territory Annexed in accordance with Section 66.0217 with statutes and the attached and incorporated petition for direct annexation, signed by the owners of the property proposed to be annexed and filed with the city clerk on June 29, 2022. The following territory to the town of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Section 2, Effective Annexation, From and After the Date of this Ordinance, the territories described in Section 1 shall be part of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, for any and all purposes provided by law and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinance's rules and regulations governing the City of Lake Mills. Section 3, Ward Designation, The territory described in Section 1 of this ordinance is hereby made a part of Ward 1 of the City of Lake Mills, subject to the ordinance's rules and regulations of the City of Lake Mills governing wards. Section 4, Severalability, If any provision of this ordinance is invalid and unconstitutional, such invalidity and unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance and that can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional provision of application. Section 5, Effective Date, The ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Wow, thank you.
At least it was a short one, one page.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So that was the first reading of Ordinance 1241. The second reading will be at our next meeting. Is there any discussion or questions on that ordinance?
Just a question or a comment for everyone. The, we've already approved an annexation for F and M Bank a few months ago and this looks like it's an adjacent parcel. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're gonna add another parcel and and do a CSM and create a bigger lot.
Okay.
The original one was a, fit the site. I mean, they could get everything on it. But the, they wanted access to both the E and B and the county was controlling that. And so in order to be able to hit the distances required, they needed to buy that additional lot.
From the intersection for, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are they, is there any urgency here to go through the three reading process?
No, they just started, they're gonna have to go through Plan Commission for the zoning and then that ordinance will come forward, so that'll be out of ways. Probably, you know, that one you might wanna think about passing, waiving the readings and going to the third reading right away for the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. BSO is pretty much done.
We won't see that till first of September, probably?
Yeah, even that's a little bit early.
Okay.
But we'll see what happens, but that would be the earliest that you would see it.
So this isn't slowing them up at this point?
No.
Okay, just wanted to to make sure. Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right, next is Ordinance 1242. This is the first reading. Lori, can you read through that?
Ordinance 1242, Zoning Ordinance Amending, Section 660-56, Land Use Regulations and the Matrix of Land Uses, Commercial Indoor Lodging. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby, does here, ordain as follows. Section 1, Section 660-56, Land Use Regulations and the Matrix in Land Uses, Chapter 660. Attachment 1 is amended as follows. Commercial indoor lodging hereby requires a conditional use permit in B1 and PB zoning districts. District, or Section 2, Commercial Indoor Lodging remains permitted only by the grant of a conditional use permit in R3-12, B2, I1, and PI zoning districts. Nothing in this amendment changes those designations. Section 3, Adoption of this Ordinance Amendment has been sponsored by City Council Representative Catherine Bishop. Section 4, Adoption of this Ordinance Amendment has been recommended by City of Lake Mills Plan Commission by Motion 22-7-3, after consideration of the same at the regular meeting of the Plan Commission on July 26, 2022. Section 5, All ordinance or parts of ordinance inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you, Lori. So that was the first reading of Ordinance 1242. We'll have a second reading in our next meeting. Any questions on this ordinance?
So I can start with the statement or I can save it for the third reading, just by way of, I guess, cleaning this up. Section 4 would be removed for the final reading and I I would make that motion when we get there.
So Section 4 is removed?
Yes.
So it was, it was not approved by the Planning Commission?
And I can either, I'll talk to Mr. Drescher. I can either clean that up before the next reading or we can make the motion at the final reading. I'm not sure which is the best way to do that.
This is the, excuse me, this is the document that the Plan Commission also was presented with. At their meeting, they did not make a recommendation to adopt this ordinance, so Section 4 should at the very least be stricken from this ordinance in the event that you do choose to pass it.
So Catherine, you made me do a lot of research on the zoning rules and it was very enlightening. I I learned a lot through the process and the grid sheet is is very helpful that that is in our zoning ordinances to to understand the different businesses and how they how they lay out depending on the different zones within the city. So currently, the, currently, the indoor lodging is permitted in B1, which is essentially the downtown district. And the PB zoning, which is, what's PB stand for?
Plan business.
Plan businesses, which is basically the gateways to our city. Those type of planned business zones is is currently where they're permitted. So I guess when I look at the permitting process, it it allows, by having permitted locations, it allows a business like this to be directed to certain areas where they could could have their business without getting a conditional permit, basically. So it's it's currently directing hotel owners towards the downtown or to the the gateway areas of our of our community to to locate without getting a conditional permit. Is that, is that the current, is that the right way to look at it?
That's correct, yes. And so there's two different ways within any zoning district that you can put in a business, per se. One is by right. It's just allowed. The other is typically a conditional use permit. And we currently require a conditional use permit in all zoning dis, for commercial indoor lodging, which are hotels. We allow those in all districts by conditional use permit, except for the two that Mr. Waters has delineated, which is planned business, which is largely our East Tyranina Park Road corridor. That's the main planned business district and also in our downtown. So as Mr. Waters is saying, in those two districts, they're not treated equally currently in our code. And those two districts, as he's describing it, would tend to draw somebody who'd wanna put a hotel there because there aren't additional requirements. I did have some prepared remarks about what a conditional use permit would require, and again, I can go into that tonight to kind of frame how everybody else thinks about this, or we can discuss it more when there's a motion at the third reading. So, Mr. Waters, yes, I would say you are thinking about that correctly.
It'd be great if you gave the background now.
Okay, and you have the benefit, you have the benefit of having sat in on the last meeting at Plan Commission, so some of my comments will be the same, but I have added some additional comments based on some issues that came up. So I'm relying on the motion that I gave to the Plan Commission as background to this council for my ordinance proposal. And you can really see that there's a discrepancy across the zoning districts as to how commercial indoor lodging is treated, based on the conversation Mr. Waters and I just had. And this ordinance amendment would fix that and it would make it so that there's a conditional use permit required for hotels in all zoning districts, not just some of them. So first, the requirements of a conditional use permit, so that everyone knows, you know, the conditions that are on the table. And it's these, it's like eight things and I'll list them in a second. If these requirements are met, then the Plan Commission would typically recommend that the conditional use permit move forward for council approval. And so those items are that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. That the proposed conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted or substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. The establishment of the proposed conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities will be provided. Adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress, et cetera. The proposed conditional use shall be in all respects conformed to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The proposed conditional use at its proposed location is in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan. And the potential public benefits of the proposed conditional use outweigh any and all potential adverse impacts of the proposed conditional use. So typically, we had this conversation at Plan Commission. Conditional use permits are used when a use in the district might be a little bit odd or have additional concerns that other uses in the district wouldn't. So if you look at a planned business district, you might, well, for instance, you have Badger Chevrolet. You have McDonald's, you have, I think Summit is there. So those are all typically retail establishments. And the reason a hotel might be treated a little bit differently with a conditional use permit is because of the additional considerations it brings, such as safety, such as additional traffic, different times of the traffic. You're gonna have people coming in and out at all times of the day. Increased traffic more than just, let's say, a bank because, again, of those uses of a hotel. And also, what I find interesting is our planned business district along East Tyranina Park Road also has a cross from it residential. So we have to take into consideration those concerns as well for our residential citizens there that could be affected by the increased use of something like a hotel, which is why I think a conditional use permit is still appropriate in a planned business district. So that's a little bit of the background as to what a CUP would consider at the Plan Commission level. And then I still thought it was appropriate to bring it to this council despite their lack of recommendation because we're in a different position than our Plan Commission. We're elected officials. We have a different policy perspective. And if you even look at our strategic, you know, plan that we just passed, we are looking at what is the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. We've said that we want more community engagement. And by passing an ordinance like this requiring a CUP for a hotel, which we don't have one in the city, it allows for us as the council to get those recommendations, both at a public hearing at the Plan Commission and recommendations from the Plan Commission as to how to move forward. So it gives us that input that we've set as a council that we want and we desire. So those are my initial comments as to what this does and why I'd like to move forward with these readings, given even the lack of recommendation last week. And I'll save my other comments to address any questions.
Mr. Wilkie, you you wrote a memo. Did you, did you wanna comment on that or does the memo stand on its own or what's your thoughts?
Right now, I'll I'll just pass and and wait till the the third reading.
Okay. I have a question for staff. As I look through the zoning regulations, I see that that almost every, if not all, business category has a P in in the graph, which which means that it's permitted in this zone.
With regard to indoor commercial lodging specifically?
Well, I'm looking at all the others, that that there are areas within the town that they're permitted to, to to exist in these zones, where the hotel, if we if we went through this, if we went with this motion, if we went with this ordinance, it would eliminate any zone within the city for the for a permitted lodging facility. It would all have to go through conditional per, conditional use permit, correct?
So I I wanna make sure you're focusing in on just indoor commercial lodging. I have some issue with the statements that you made. I mean, there's conditional use throughout that matrix for many different uses in many different zoning districts. Bed and breakfast, I think, is an example, that the only places where they are, where where they can be permitted is through a conditional use permit, for instance. So with regard to indoor commercial lodging specifically, what you see is that it's currently requires a conditional use permit in R312, in B2, in I1, and in I, PI. It is permitted by right under B1 and PB.
I can't find bed and breakfast, but I'll I'll look it up later.
Oh, it's on the first page of the matrix, about halfway down under residential. Bed and breakfast, you see the letter C almost all the way across the line in all districts.
Okay, thank you.
So I mean, and to go to the the comment that was made about Badger specifically, auto body service or auto body repair very often requires a conditional use permit. With regard to McDonald's, I believe their drive-through requires a conditional use permit. So it's it's a little broader than the way that you just made it sound in that it's, there's oftentimes a conditional use permit is incorporated into accessory uses or ancillary uses to the original, the kind of the primary use as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Culvers 2 is the other one where a conditional use permit was required for the drive-through portion of the restaurant. And so it's something where, yes, we have restaurants in the city, for example, but the drive-through portion creates maybe additional traffic. I know it affected in its initial planning the adjacent businesses and that's why it require, you know, in your planning that you do as a city, you wanna take that into account before you get to the issue where, okay, now you have a drive-through and it's a problem. You can't really take it back. So that's why you would have a conditional use permit for items like that. And I would say why we even require it for, you know, lodging in the rest of the districts.
Any other comment or questions? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments and I appreciate you bringing this forward, Catherine. I'm, I've also been kind of trying to think about how this fits with our other zoning requirements and and looking at the matrix. I mean, there are, there are multiple activities in that matrix where, as you read across the line, some are permitted by right and some are conditional use permit. And to me, that's how zoning is supposed to be. that's how zoning is supposed to work. I mean, Greg, you kind of phrased it similar to how I think about it, that, you know, if we want certain businesses or certain activities to be in certain districts, that's why we set up those zoning districts, and that's why we have a comprehensive plan that says, here's where we want planned business to be, and then these are the kinds of activities that we're going to allow in planned business, and we're going to make that, that simpler for those businesses by just having a set of standards in our ordinance rather than having to go through that case-by-case conditional use review. So I guess I'm still trying to understand why, I don't see a lack of consistency in how indoor commercial lodging is treated in every district. I don't see that as a problem, I see that as the design of our zoning and our matrix. So that's something I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand why that consistency is more important than, you know, giving certainty to a business that they know, yeah, this is, this is a kind of activity that this city obviously wants in planned business, so that's, that's the, that's where I'm going to buy my property, or that's where I'm going to develop my lodging. So that's, that's what I'm trying to, I guess, understand, you know, in the proposal, it seems to me that there should be different requirements for an activity depending on the district that you're in.
Any other comments or questions? So thank you. That was the first reading, and for the second reading, we'll have that, that adjustment made then? Is that the proper way to move forward?
We'll amend it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, fantastic. All right, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll move forward to recommendations for future agendas. Mr. Wilkie?
I have a survey proposal ready for the next meeting from the county extension office. We will have a software purchase proposal before the council, it's actually, won't be until next year's budget, but we have to order it this year in order to be able to get it online by the time we need it next year, so that'll be up. And then we are looking at a proposal to outfit the second, our ambulance to be able to support the EMS in the next 12 months, and those will all three be on the agenda for sure.
It's also likely that you have a development agreement in front of you for a new development on the south side.
Yes, White Oaks.
All right. Anything else for recommendations? And that survey you were talking about, the Sandy Beach survey?
The Sandy Beach survey, yes.
Okay. Fantastic, I know the community's looking forward to that. All right, there's no other additions, the meeting stands adjourned at 8:34. Thank you.